... sixty-five. Interesting trio. Horn.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. I'll call the January sixth, two thousand fourteen Moscow City Council meeting to order. The first item on our agenda, as usual, is Renewing Our Focus, and I'm going to bookend my tenure as mayor by offering the last of these Renewing Our Focus segments, as I opened it with the first one in two thousand six. This evening, it's a topic of kind of looking back to the earlier time. I think it's important for us to recognize how fortunate we are to live in a place where we can have a peaceful transition in government. There are many places around the world where that is not the case. We haven't had anything especially scandalous going on here. There haven't, in association with these elections, haven't been any sexting of tasteless photos. There have been no drug scandals, as far as I've heard, no fiscal impropriety, no assertions of infidelity, or even offensive language, just a difference of political ideology. We have differing political positions, but we don't necessarily have to equate those with personal disdain. I think we learn lessons during campaign seasons and reminded of the civility of our community and elected government here in Moscow. We had a relatively pathetic percentage of voters go to the polls relative to other countries. Moscow had thirty-four percent, which actually is doing pretty well compared to Moscow, Russia, where they had just under twenty percent in their most recent elections. But Western Europe averages seventy-seven percent voter turnout, with some countries above ninety percent, even where voting is not mandatory. So that's a challenge to all of you. In subsequent elections, become informed voters and go to the polls. The history of the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to compliment Sue Scott for being a pacer with me on that. In February two thousand six, we had a council that was not inclined to routinely recite the Pledge of Allegiance. It was very controversial at the time. The conversations went something like, "We're Americans. We cannot be made to state an oath such as that." You'll hear our elected officials tonight with the oath of office, recognizing that they support the Constitution and the laws of the land. And I think that is sufficient in the United States of America. I think you will find there is a strong amount of patriotism in this council, in the incoming council, just as there was in two thousand six, with that council that took a fair amount of heat for the idea that simply reciting words without internalizing their meaning was not substantive and not so meaningful. And so Sue Scott has been a pacer, so that we are respectful of that oath, that pledge of allegiance, and the meaning of it. And I want to thank her for representing that with dignity, as we can hear our voices side by side here in this back row. Within the context of political transition and the perceptions of patriotism, the equal representation for all under our form of government, I'm offering this video tonight, which I hope will be self-explanatory. In two thousand six, like now, there was hope that the status quo would be improved, at least selectively, with the change of political direction. Stay tuned. Please take a look, direct your attention to the screen. I'll call the January sixteenth, two thousand seven Moscow City Council Special Meeting to Order. As most of you know, our friend and colleague John Dickinson disappeared a week ago Sunday, and we have no updated news. The family, friends, and searchers with the Oregon authorities have found no evidence of John. We miss him terribly, and we cherish the many ways he touched so many lives. And this evening, for the Renewing Our Focus segment, I'd like to recall John Dickinson's being the first of our council members to introduce Renewing Our Focus. The context of that meeting was, this was January thirtieth, two thousand six. It was an unsettled time in our city. We'd had a new election, just fresh on the heels, of four new city council members and a new mayor being elected. We'd had a number of controversial issues that had already come before us. And true to form, it was John who chose the perfect touch for that very necessary meeting. I direct your attention to our screen, and we'll watch a DVD of John renewing our focus. ... meeting of the Moscow City Council to Order. The first item on our agenda this evening is something called Renewing Our Focus. And in lieu of routinely saying the Pledge of Allegiance at every meeting, lacking unanimity among our council members, we have implemented a practice called Renewing Our Focus. I'll remind citizens that our elected officials have signed an oath of office, that, which we promise to uphold the U.S. Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Idaho, and the laws and ordinance of the City of Moscow. So you will undoubtedly hear the Pledge of Allegiance continue to be said at some of our meetings, but at other times, council members will bring forward other examples of patriotism, humanitarianism, community spirit, and inspirational messages. And this week, it's John Dickinson's turn for that presentation.
I was quite pleased when Nancy asked me to start this. And I guess I wanted to say a couple of words before I do my thing, and that is that I'm not sure how many people know that I ran for this office originally because of the way that a graduate student of mine was being treated by our government, Sami Omar Al-Husayyan, who ended up staying in jail for five hundred and eleven days in solitary confinement until he was found innocent of all charges and was allowed to go home. I think that, I think I'd follow that by just saying that the person who wrote the pledge of allegiance was a Baptist minister, socialist in Florida, I think it was, and he'd hoped to be able to say, instead of with justice and, with liberty and justice for all, he hoped to be able to say that what the French say, and that is equality, liberty, and justice, but that equality was in eighteen ninety-three, when he was writing this, was not possible for either women or minorities. It turns out, in about that same time period, eighteen ninety-three, a woman was driving across this country, this was not driving, moving, or traveling across this country, and was struck by the beauty of our country. And she wrote in eighteen ninety-three, a song called God bless America the Beautiful. And so what I thought I'd do tonight for my thing is to, is I've never actually sung in public, but to stand up and ask you to join me in one round of America the Beautiful. [Singing] Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountains' majesties, above thy fruited plains. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and found thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Thanks.
So I think that was pretty amazing. John Dickinson went on to establish Sirius Idaho Theater and do lots of wonderful things for the arts, and I think he lost his stage fright here, in this room, that night, singing in front of an audience like this one. In that, we have chosen to routinely reintroduce the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in standing and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item tonight, in addressing old business before we convene with, after the oath of office and swearing in of a new city council and mayor, is to address the approval of minutes from the December sixteenth, two thousand thirteen Moscow City Council meeting.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Okay. We have Sue's motion. I heard Tom's second. Any discussion? Before voting, we'll start with you, Tim.
Aye.
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 And I.
Okay. That motion carries, and the minutes are thereby approved. The next item tonight is the committee or commission reports. What's happening with any of the commissions that you've attended, Walter?
I was out of town a lot of December.
Okay.
So I'll pass.
And did you delegate any of that responsibility to someone else?
It's carried by the vice chair.
I wasn't the vice chair. I don't think we had any.
And so, thanks to come. Walter, do you have any other committee meetings?
I don't have any.
Okay. Sue, how about you?
Well, planning and zoning also skipped a meeting, but as I finish up with my time in the Urban Renewal Agency, I can make a report on that. During the election, there was a lot of discussion about opening up the urban renewal, the Altourist Park, one and two, to not necessarily, to rezone it, so not necessarily would it be a technical park, it was just the RTO zoning. And I thought, well, we should know if that's possible and what it takes to do that. And so you'll probably hear a lot more from Jeff Jones, who was, who, at the last meeting, did a thorough explanation of the fact that all the property owners need to approve it, and we learned that Altourist One and Altourist Two have different CCNRs. And Robin gave a, Robin and the URA are the only current owners in Altourist Two, and she gave a fairly impassioned presentation of why she thinks the research and technology designation should not change, that our economy is coming around, that that was, the Thompson family specifically wanted to encourage that designation in that park, and that we should keep it. And so it's not impossible, but right now, it's not recommended by the owners of Altourist Two. And we don't have to have the bondholder approve it, but that's where it's at now. So right now, Jeff is working on getting the two CCNRs kind of coordinated for the first half of the park and the second half of the park. So it turned out to be a long, complicated explanation, but there we are.
All right. Thank you. Any other reports from you, Sue? Was that, that's the only one?
Nope. That's it. It was C R, you know, Christmas time.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Okay. Tom, how about you?
I wanted to report on two things. Since the last meeting, I attended the Human Rights Commission meeting, and there's a lot of good talk and planning about the upcoming Martin Luther King Breakfast on January eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
I think it's a Saturday. Many, well, everybody here, of course, is welcome and encouraged to attend. It's a, it's a fun breakfast, motivational speaker, lots of awards presented that evening. It's a, it's a, or that morning. It's a great breakfast time, about nine to perhaps eleven, at the Moscow Middle School All-Purpose Room. And the other thing I wanted to report on was from the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department meeting that I attended in the second Monday of December. We continue to get excellent volunteers applying to the, to be EMTs and firefighters. So I'm always warmed by the applicants that apply and get approved for volunteer, for volunteerism with the fire department and ambulance crews.
Thank you. Tim, what about you? Any reports?
Had no meetings since our last council meeting, no regular scheduled meetings.
Okay. Thank you. Dan?
I, like Tim, there, none of my meetings met, or committees met during the holiday break, so it's been a long time away, waiting for something to happen this month.
Okay. How about you, Wayne?
We did have a plus knowledge corridor meeting. They've been meeting actually three times a month lately. And the big thing coming up is they're working very hard on a program called Be an Entrepreneur Boot Camp. And this is slated to be held in June, from the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth. And there will be a nine o'clock meeting, if you want to call it that, breakfast. No, you're not going to get breakfast, meeting, at Fairview, Fairweather.
Field, Fairfield.
Fairfield.
Fairfield. Thank you very much.
Fairweather.
Fairfieldian. Nine o'clock this Thursday, and it's open to everybody that wants to come to it. Particularly, we're looking for, at business owners, educators, bankers, folks that can be mentors to the people that will be coming to this boot camp, and find out more information about that. So you are welcome to that meeting at nine o'clock on Thursday morning. And then on April third, PKC will all be, also be handling another business showcase, and that'll be at the Bell Tower in Fulman. And that is really all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. The next item tonight is comments from the outgoing mayor and council members, and so I would like to first invite remarks from Tim Brown.
Thank you, Mayor Cheney. Well, representing the city of Moscow is, without question, a very interesting job. And so the last four years for me have been absolutely wonderful. So to the citizens of Moscow, I thank you for letting me serve as a member of the Moscow City Council. And I want to say this, that you have a talented, experienced, and dedicated group of women and men that work for you as employees of the city of Moscow. So to the whole staff, I thank you, to the entire staff, for helping me do my job as a Moscow City Council person. To my fellow council members, I want to thank you for your participation in Moscow City Government. And I want to welcome Bill Lambert, our incoming mayor, Art Betke, and John Weber, incoming council members. Welcome. I've enjoyed being on the Moscow City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Sue?
Well, I knew. Tim was, Tim's modus operandi, and, and reputation is to thank everybody. So I knew he would cover all those bases for me. But yes, I really do appreciate all the help with all the staff. And I don't know how you guys get any work done. You spend so much time explaining it and doing meetings and meeting with the public. I don't know. I just want to say, bathroom in Friendship Square, bathroom in Friendship Square, bathroom in Friendship Square. And also, I'm going to keep my eye on the clearing of snow and ice from the sidewalks, as the mall promised they would, and it's not done. It's still there. And so, and the forty-one no-left turns done on Main Street. We'll get a new sign there. There's some unfinished business that I just kind of, and I'm not going anywhere. I'm right across the street, so I'm going to be, but this is, this, the four years on council is like a college education in political science. And in, it used to be a master's degree in public administration. I just got it. And it's almost like, oh gee, now I've learned so much, and the body of knowledge that's leaving is, is gone. And it's also this whole greater generation, well, we're not the greatest generation, that was the ones before us, but this whole generation of boomers, all our knowledge as we retire is kind of not going to be in place. So you young pipsqueaks, don't forget to ask us things, because we do remember some stuff before you go here. Lot of college students have asked me, what's the most important thing? What's the most, what did you like the best about being on council? What was the most important thing? And they kept thinking that maybe there'd be, oh, some dramatic incident. And I always say, it's the budget, the budget, the budget, the budget meetings. You find out how much money the city does not have, and how we manage to do as much as we do with it is just amazing. So some of you come to budget meetings and find out, and you don't complain about, oh gee, why isn't the city doing this, until you come up with a checkbook and go, oh, I'll pay you to do that. You could, you can raise my taxes a little bit. So the other thing is that the perception that Moscow's not business-friendly has sort of been a self-fulfilling prophecy. If you say it often enough, people will believe it. If Walmart wanted to put a superstore in over across from the cemetery today, they could. We have the ordinance in place to do it. The fact that they stayed where they were and built a smaller store and did not leave a dark store, I think, helps the economy of Moscow, because all of those businesses, Applebee's and Duran Loews, and all of the people that built around where Walmart was, it's like building next to McDonald's. Everybody wants to be by the busy place. They would have suffered had there been a dark store. So the fact that they downsized and stayed, that's a wonderful thing for Moscow's economy. I heard people out in the county say, oh, it was a horrible thing that there was a large retail, they had to wait for a large retail establishment ordinance before anything was done out by the cemetery. And they said, well, you know, and Lewiston, they, they didn't do anything mean against Walmart. Well, Walmart left Lewiston, too. I think Walmart has understood how the economy, how it's smarter to be greener, and it's smarter to be smaller, and the entire situation of big empty malls across America has not been a good thing. So I think we are business-friendly. We're doing the industrial park. It takes a long time. We have the, the Legacy Crossing, and we have the Railroad Right Way, and I think we're just, just getting started. I think Moscow's just getting started. Our businesses are going to grow, and we're going to be fine. And thank you for letting me serve.
Thank you, Sue.
Twenty-five words or less.
I'm guessing these two, they must have been looking over my shoulder as I wrote some notes about both of them, which I want to share here in just a minute. But I also want to join my colleagues in thanking the citizens of Moscow for the great honor and pleasure of being able to serve as mayor for these past eight years, and as a city council member for two years prior. This is a marvelous community with strongly-held and diversely-held ideas. I think that's among our greatest, greatest strengths, and I hope that we can retain that diversity and the ferociously-held opinions that are brought before our elected officials to make the best decisions on behalf of the citizens of Moscow, all of the citizens of Moscow. I do, I also want to join Tim in thanking city staff, and I've tried to do that consistently along the way. I sent a note to all the staff today, but certainly elected officials can't do it without the quality of staffing we have here in the city of Moscow. We have tremendously talented people, and as Sue pointed out, they're oftentimes working very creatively to leverage resources, to, to do some good things, you know, to, to help stretch those dollars just as far as we can. So please convey our collective thanks to all of the city's staff through all of the departments citywide. Tim Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
He has earned his reputation as a hard worker. As you could tell tonight, he takes exceptional notes to represent, in this case, the volunteer commissions on which he has served as a council liaison. And he's, he's done that as well as anyone I have ever seen. One of the, one commission chair described Tim as the best liaison they've ever had. I think he's especially come into his own over the past several months. He poses probing questions. He introduces ideas that have been a little bit off the beaten path sometimes, sometimes representing those commission perspectives that are not always fully recognized at the level of council. So these commissions, these volunteers, do a huge amount of work. We've thanked staff, but we couldn't do it without our volunteers either. And I think we have well over a hundred volunteers now doing tremendous work. But to bring those views, the hard-working volunteer citizens, and bring their perspectives to the city council, to the policymakers' level, takes somebody like Tim Brown and the representation he has provided. So I want to say thank you to Tim and wish him well in his future endeavors. And I have a small token of appreciation for that.
Small?
Smaller than a Porsche.
You can open that up if you want to. While I'm talking, while I'm talking about Sue, I think you might unwrap that. Sue Scott. So some of you may know this. I recruited Sue to run for city council. She was somewhat reluctant, as I was when I first ran, and I kept saying, I know you're going to love it. I did. I, I remember that, you know, dig your heels in and say, come on, I write letters to the editor, I vote, I'm not council material. And she's been terrific. So I knew her to be a smart person, a diligent worker, and she has demonstrated that again. She's had cause to juggle a lot of things over the course of her tenure as a council member, personal as well as professional considerations, and I think she's done that with the efficiency of a true pragmatist, and the inspiration of someone who loves lifelong learning. You heard that tonight, as she's talking about getting her master's in public administration, minus the diploma, through this process. Sue put together one of the most inspiring Renewing Our Focus segments I've ever heard, and that was the one we've yet to dredge up. I think she recycled the paper, but it was about the Leighton County Fair.
Oh.
And kind of the, the personal and community values that are represented there. It was a wonderful segment, so I hope we can find that again. Sue is certainly not an ideologue. Did she and I always agree? No, absolutely not. But I always appreciated the thoughtfulness and the practicality of her positions, and her ability to back that up in a very articulate fashion. And I think some of that may have had to do with all of those years of training on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and developing those reasoned statements of relevant criteria and standards. As I mentioned before, Sue has been my companion in trying to set the pace for these Pledge of Allegiance segments that we do, and keep them respectful and cohesive, befitting the solemnity of that, that pledge. And finally, another really impressive thing about Sue Scott is her family. And by getting to know her, I've come to know her delightful and precocious grandchildren. And so if anybody's looking to recruit candidates in about, what, twenty twenty-four, or maybe National Merit Scholars, I'm not sure, or both, they could look to those children, and they certainly inspire me, as their grandmother has. And I also have a small token of appreciation for Sue.
Thank you. I love the paper.
Yeah. Because, yeah, somebody might want to know what that is. It is under the twenty-five-dollar threshold. I want the taxpayers to know this, you know, or the voters to know this.
Well, I'm sorry.
That looks like me carrying a load.
I thought it did, too. Enjoy the journey.
Too much noise.
That's all right. There you are. So I'm thinking that Tim is going to be heading up to Lake Coeur d'Alene with a little more frequency and have occasion to become a fish flipper. Is that what I called it in there, that little note?
Yeah. I didn't know what you were handing it to me for, what I was going to shovel with it.
Yeah, maybe you should just leave it up here at the dais for the next team. I don't know.
Thank you.
All right.
Good one. Good one. All right.
One more thing here. See if you can get that open. All right. Okay.
Oh, bicycling gloves. We had a, we did the Palouse Sprint Triathlon one, the first year. Tom won the swimming event. They talked me into doing bicycling, and these guys, I, because he came out of the pool first, I was ahead for a hundred yards till the guys with the alien helmets on their skinny tires went by.
But you looked good in your sweatsuit.
Yeah. She did.
Your arms.
And who, who, who ran the anchor leg on your team, Sue?
And the anchor leg, right there. So it says, "To Sue, we almost decorum." That was the name of our team, right?
All right.
Thank you very much.
So there are some good memories up here. Please join me in giving a hand to our outgoing elected officials. Okay. The next item tonight is the oath of office to be administered by our city clerk, and the certificate of election will be presented to Bill Lambert, Art Betke, excuse me, Arthur Betke, and John Weber and Walter Steed.
Oh, we're going to let them deviate?
Absolutely. We like surprises.
There we go.
We're Moscow.
That's right.
Okay. First, we have some going-away gifts for our outgoing council members. Sue?
Thank you. Wow. And you wrap these all yourself, right, Gary?
Sir, and I had almost nothing to do with it. Sir, I had almost nothing to do with it. And for Mayor Chain.
Ah, thank you. Thank you. Do you want us to open that?
Yeah.
Yes. All right.
This is better than Christmas.
After the staff, we just want to congratulate all three of you on the excess of free time that you'll have from now on.
Very nice.
When you, when I came on, you said something about squeezing blood out of it.
Something like that.
They don't, they don't have to be squeezed anymore.
Thank you.
Better than Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. So I wondered why Stephanie, our city clerk, asked me, I kept, she kept saying, so what was most meaningful in your tenure? And I was saying things like, you know, transparency of process, civic engagement, open mic sessions, all those kinds of things. She goes, no, no, something that you can, like, take a picture of. So this, I don't know if you can see this or not, but it's a picture of me with Mrs. Obama related to the Let's Move Initiative in Washington, D.C. And because of the terrific work our community is doing, including staff and those volunteers as well as our elected officials, we are recognized at the national level for trying to cure childhood obesity within a generation and to promote healthy, active lifestyles and our local foods movement. So there you go. If you do this, you, too, can get a photo. Like, just let Stephanie Claus know.
Any inscription?
And the inscription has my name, Mayor, 2006 to 2013, Councilmember, 2004 to 2005.
All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, and now the oath of office, is that right? Would you like us to just sit here while you do that?
Usually the outgoing mayor and council step down and Stephanie applies the oath to the incoming mayor.
Okay. Tim and Sue, I would suggest you take your nameplates with you, as I will do with mine.
Okay.
I could set a chain to put around it.
In case you forget.
Yeah. If lost, please return to...
Main Street, Moscow.
All right. Clear out the ask zones.
That's right.
Please join me in a round of applause for our outgoing elected official.
Write if you find work.
Thank you.
Did she forget it? You said you were going to take it.
Yeah. I'm going to read your oath. I'm going to have you like this. And then, then you are just going to say that you do after I have it done. Okay? It could just be, but, okay. When I, when I do something real.
She's rehearsing it so we don't screw up.
Okay. But, yeah, that way we, then the pictures, okay. Okay, so have you raised your right hand? Do you, Bill Lambert, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor of the city of Moscow, Leitau County, Idaho, according to the best of your ability?
Yes, I will.
And there's your certificate of election. Congratulations.
Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Do you, Arthur Betke, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member in the city of Moscow, Leitau County, Idaho, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
And there's your certificate of election. Congratulations.
Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Do you, Arthur Betke, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member in the city of Moscow, Leitau County, Idaho, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
There's your certificate of election. Stand your right hand. Do you, Arthur Betke, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member in the city of Moscow, Leitau County, Idaho, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
There's your certificate of election. Stand your right hand. Do you, Walter, sorry. Do you, Walter Steed, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member in the city of Moscow, Leitau County, Idaho, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Do you, Walter, sorry. Do you, Walter Steed, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member in the city of Moscow, Leitau County, Idaho, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Where did you repeat something there and there? Why are there repeals?
Yeah, we have. She fixed up these.
Your certificate of election. Thanks. You're already there.
Welcome back.
Okay, here's your right hand. Do you, John Weber, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of council member in the city of Moscow, Leitau County, Idaho, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Great. Sign here.
These have to go on. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Stephanie Claus promised me a solid platinum nameplate that I'll be able to take home with me. I want you all to know about it because I'm holding her to it.
Okay, Stephanie, after that, we will carry on. Before we get started, the next thing is going to be council organization. But before we get started on that, folks, I just have a personal message that I want to give, one to Nancy for eight years' service as our mayor here in Moscow. And she did go through a tough time in some respects with the different things that went on in our fine city. And she talked about diversity and, and the group of folks that we have here. And we do have different points of opinion. But one thing that we all try to strive, and I believe this at the bottom of my heart, is doing the right thing for our community. And that's really what's important, to get those things across for our folks that can make life as wonderful as it really is here in Moscow. And that's a big deal. Anyway, I want to just publicly thank Nancy for eight years as mayor, two years as council. Four of those eight years that she was a mayor, I served as council, two of those years as president. Tim Brown, we, our paths kind of crossed. I went off the council. You came on the council and you did a wonderful job for four years. And your interest and heart was in everything good for Moscow. There's no doubt about that. Sue Scott, are you still here? Sue out there somewhere? Sue laughed, and that's a shame because 10 years ago, she and I were on planning and zoning together. And I wanted to have a little fun with her because we used to just drive each other nuts at times. And it was in a fun way because she was very detailed on things. And we should go on and on and on. I said, for crying out loud, Sue, can't you get to the point? But she was wonderful to work with, and I very much enjoyed her. And there again, her and my path crossed, but we never served together on council. But for all three of you, the best of luck, the best of wishes for your future endeavors. And with that, I am going to go with the council organization, and I will turn it over to the 2013 president, Walter Steed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council convened in a workshop this afternoon at 5:00 to discuss the reorganization of the council for 2014. And the following agreements, agreements were made regarding the following assignments in the upcoming year. The council president will be myself, again, Walter Steed. Council vice president will be Dan Karskallen. The administrative committee will be chaired by Tom Lamar with vice chair Wayne Kraus and John Weber as the third member. Public Works Finance Committee will be chaired by myself. The vice chair will be Art Betke, and Dan Karskallen will be the third member. The commissions and committees' assignments will be as follows. Arts Commission, Dan Karskallen. Building Code Advisory Committee, myself. Fair and Affordable Housing, Tom Lamar. Farmers Market Commission, Wayne Kraus. Historic Preservation Commission, Wayne Kraus. Human Rights Commission, John Weber. Paradise Path Task Force, Art Betke. Parks and Rec, Tom Lamar. Planning and Zoning, John Weber. Sustainable Environment, Art Betke. Transportation Commission, Antri Commission, will be Dan Karskallen. There are several other organizations that we liaison with. And the following council positions will be, the Liaison to the Clearwater Economic Development Agency in Lewiston, CETA, will be Wayne Kraus. The Clearwater RC&amp;D will be Tom Lamar. Leitau Economic Development Council Liaison will be Wayne Kraus. The Moscow Volunteer Fire Department will be myself, as well the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee, Pback. The Palouse Knowledge Corridor Liaison will again be Wayne Kraus. Mr. Mayor, those are the list of council assignments and officials, and I would make a motion for their approval.
I will second. Okay. Walter mentioned, approved, made the motion, John Weber seconded it. Let's go with the roll from Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, and it passed. Six to zip. And while we're on the commissions here, folks, two other commissions. Urban Renewal Agency Board Member, this is an mayoral appointment, and for the two-year term, I appointed Art Betke, who graciously accepted to do that for the two-year term. And the one-year term will be John Weber. So with that, we will... I will make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointments.
Second.
Okay, Dan made the motion to confirm that. Wayne Kraus seconded the motion. Start with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, six to pass. Very good. We will move on to the next order of business, which is public comment and mayor's response period. I have no response because I wasn't the mayor previously, but if anybody would like to come up to the podium and speak at this time, they sure can. Please limit it to three minutes, if you could. Linda, I know you got it in you.
Okay. Well, my name is Linda Paul. I'm a former member of this body and enjoyed every moment of it, or most every moment. And I'm here tonight to honor our outgoing mayor and to announce that Tom Lamar and I have proposed a fund for a bridge on the Paradise Path to symbolize Nancy's great contributions to the city as a person who bridges differences, who has, has been a leader in bringing people together. And her total dedication to a healthy environment, to exciting and wonderful opportunities for people to exercise within the community, these are incredibly important. And we thought, Tom and I thought that this would be the perfect way to commemorate her excellent service to the city of Moscow. And we invite you all to put your pledge in for this bridge, as yet to be determined. And my personal desire is the Third Street Bridge, but we'll be, I'll be looking at that. And you can make your pledge to either Tom Lamar or to myself. You can get me at lpall@moscow.com. Remember, it's L-P-A-L-L at moscow.com. And we hope to have these funds gathered by the middle of March so that we can get something going this year. And I thank Tom. Perhaps he'd like to add a little comment or two about this commemoration.
Well, I think Nancy has done so much for our community, and this is a great way for people to dedicate gifts in her honor towards a project that's so important to what she stood for in her work and so much for helping to connect the various communities within Moscow.
Thank you, Tom, for your help in putting this together. And thanks to city staff for your support for this as well. And we just want to give a big bouquet to Nancy for her excellent service for the city. And we think that this would be a fitting commemoration. So please join us if you wish to. Your commemorating pledge or your contribution to me, to Tom, or to the city of Moscow, care of Gary Redner, would be just marvelous. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations on a new council and some exciting things that you have in store for you.
Thank you, Linda.
Congratulations to Mayor Lambert, to council members Steed, Betke, and Weber. It's nice to see familiar faces back on the council dais. I'm Kenton Byrd at 517 East B Street in Moscow, and I have just two quick comments. First, postscript to Councilmember Lamar's announcement about the Martin Luther King breakfast on January 18th. The keynote speaker for the breakfast, as well as a talk two days earlier at the university, is Les Purce, who is currently the president of Evergreen College in Olympia. But I first met him when he was a council member and then mayor of Pocatello. And Councilmember Paul can correct me. I believe he was the president of the Association of Idaho Cities during his time in Idaho. And so I think you, as mayor and council members, will have a special interest in his remarks. And his topic is "The Dream Continues." And I would just like to echo the thanks that were expressed earlier to council members Sue Scott, Tim Brown, and to outgoing mayor Nancy Cheney. And I am especially appreciative of the video that she used as part of her Renewing Our Focus presentation. It was very moving for me to see John Dickinson's image and to hear his words. And it was an appropriate reminder of John's legacy of civility, fairness, and good humor, which is certainly something that is important as the council moves forward in this new year. So good luck. year. So good luck with your tasks ahead, and thanks for your service.
Thank you, Kenton, for your remarks. And I very much look forward to the Martin Luther King Breakfast on the 18th. And I hope to see a number of folks out in the audience there.
Commissioners talk, too?
I didn't see anywhere where it said they couldn't. Dave McGraw, Latau County Commissioner and chairman of that board. I just, as all of us, I'd like to congratulate you all on your newfound positions. And I bring a message from the other two commissioners, and we're looking very much forward to working with you all in the future. I know we've got some hot-button issues coming up right away, area of impact. I think the last couple of years, we've worked very hard to have a good, workable, working with the former mayor and the former council. And I look very much forward to working with you gentlemen in the near future. So look forward to it.
Thank you, Dave.
Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lilly. Greetings, all the new members of the council and the mayor. As we begin the new year, I thought I would mention how important I think it is that citizens have the opportunity to speak like this, both in the public comment segment of the agenda, and when you are aware there is public sentiment wanting to be heard, and you invite us to speak, even though it's not a public hearing. It demonstrates transparency in city matters. Moreover, it creates a dialogue with this governing body and allows all of us to explore information that you subsequently provide when someone has requested it. There are many examples, to mention just a few. I got to publicly say that my neighbor down the street and myself were very pleased with the city sidewalk program this summer, which we did. One of our EMTs caught your ear on some help that they need in providing their, quite literally, life-saving services. Folks have shared concerns with you about water issues, wish lists for parks, and enhancing our beloved farmers' market. Others, like the gentleman who came here about one of the orphan paths, contribute a lot of useful background. And Greg Papinog doggedly spoke about the ball fields. Folks have sat sometimes long hours to actively engage with you. They trust you are willing to take in what they have to share, even though it makes the meetings a little longer and sometimes requires extra patience. I fervently hope that you will continue to invite us to this podium and to the tables in the committees and commission meetings. It makes for better government and a better dialogue with our leaders. It is important. Thank you for listening, past, present, and future.
Thank you for your comments. And just for the record, the public comment phase throughout my administration will continue. There's no reason for it not to. Because I've always thought, I thought it was a good idea when I was on council, and it's been something that's been done for a number of years here in Moscow, and I totally agree with that. So thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to come up? Come on up, David.
It would appear that people expect that I'll still continue to have something to say. Thank you so much, new council members and our new mayor. Most of you I know rather well, because I've been coming here mostly in the last year or two, on occasion, but before that, rather routinely. So let me go ahead and say what I had wanted to say. Tonight marks the end of an era. Mayor Nancy Cheney has served the city of Moscow for the past 10 years. I had not moved to Moscow when her service began, so I was unaware until that last council meeting of the changes in city council procedure, which had already occurred. I assumed the council meeting had always been at 7:00 and was held in alternate weeks from the council committee meetings. That simple change made it possible for citizens to more readily participate in local government. I recognize that there are only a few of us who consistently take advantage of this opportunity, but it is significant just the same. I want to thank Mayor Cheney for her sustained efforts to make local government more accessible and responsible to our citizens. The morning paper says that she plans to stay active in the community. I certainly hope so. Moscow can only benefit from her continuing participation. I want to thank the mayor again, the former mayor again, for all that she has done. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Would anybody else like to come forward? Thank you very much. We'll close the public comment session of the meeting. We'll move on to our next thing, which is a public hearing regarding the judicial confirmation preparation for water projects. Gary Redner will present and introduce.
Thank you, Your Honor. What we have tonight is an opportunity for the public to provide comments to the city council regarding a judicial confirmation process. The judicial confirmation process is being employed to finance the construction of well number 10, which is our newest prospective well located close to the Washington border. In addition to the well number 10 project, there are also some transmission lines, as well as six booster stations, which are also part of the judicial confirmation process. Danielle Quaid from Holly Troxel is our attorney who is handling that judicial confirmation process. I'll leave the bulk of the presentation to her. Les, and I, and Don Palmer are available to answer technical questions. You have in your packets a rather lengthy commentary describing the judicial confirmation process, the process that has occurred up till now, as well as a draft petition, which is in your packet, which in two weeks, after you have considered the public testimony to be heard tonight, hopefully you will consider that public testimony and vote on whether to authorize staff to file that petition before the district court for Latau County. So with that, I'll turn it over to Danielle.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay. Let's see if we can. Is it going to come up? Well, as Gary said, I'm Danielle Quaid. I'm with Holly Troxel, which is a law firm based out of Boise. But I have the good fortune of serving the firm from the Coeur d'Alene office. So not too far of a drive down here for me, which is nice. My practice is in this area of municipal finance, so these types of considerations are what we do all the time. So in light of the change of the guard tonight, we thought we'd give you a little bit of a review. So I apologize for people who have heard Gary make this presentation before. But I wanted to just share with you a little bit about what brings us to this public hearing on a judicial confirmation. Maybe. Not very good at this, guys.
Try the keyboard. Push the down arrow.
Okay. As Gary described, the city's comprehensive water plan calls for these new improvements, one of them being a well for redundancy purposes, and then some new booster stations and water lines that are primarily for fire suppression. So the city, in light of those requirements, was looking for methods to finance these needed improvements and sought a DEQ loan, and was awarded a DEQ loan, which is a very advantageous way to finance such projects. The interest rate is very low. The terms are very reasonable. It's a very good method for financing in Idaho for these types of water, wastewater-type projects. However, the thing, the key to being able to secure that DEQ loan is having the authority to incur the debt. So I think, as most of you know, Article 8, Section 3 of the Idaho Constitution restricts municipalities from occurring debt in excess of a year without a vote. Now, for most types of projects, this requires a two-thirds vote. However, for certain revenue-generating facilities, like water systems, that vote is a simple majority. There isn't an exception under Article 8, Section 3 to this voting requirement if the project is deemed to be an ordinary and necessary expense of the government. So in looking at ordinary and necessary and what fits in with that exception to Article 8, Section 3, the Supreme Court has narrowly defined ordinary and necessary to expenses that are critical to begin and expend during the current year. They look at a number of factors when assessing this urgency, including whether the project is required by law, you know, including permits and other requirements, whether it's a repair and replacement of an existing facility, and whether it impacts public health and safety. After a very restrictive opinion was issued in 2005, bond counsel became unwilling. Bond counsel is the position that I serve in, in issuing an opinion that the bonds are legal, valid, binding, and enforceable. Every lender requires that opinion when municipalities incur debt. And after this restrictive opinion that narrowed the definition of Article 8, or of ordinary and necessary, we've been unable to give the unqualified opinion that's required on projects, because it's very hard to tell whether or not the Supreme Court would agree that a project is ordinary and necessary. So to help remedy that situation, there is a process under Idaho Code, under Title VII, Chapter 13, that provides for an adjudication of the validity of a debt prior to the issuance of the debt, and it's called a judicial confirmation. And that confirmation can be used to make a determination of whether an expense is ordinary and necessary. Now, you know some things about the project that Gary was describing, and it fits a lot of those requirements that I was just describing, under the considerations for being ordinary and necessary, including being required by law, being required by your permits, and impacting health and safety, and also being repair and replacement of existing facilities. Your work, you have existing water system that provides service to your citizens. And to keep that up and to keep it in permit compliance, you need to, you need these projects. You need to be able to provide the water requirements that DEQ and the administrative code requires. So with that, the staff and I discussed this as an option to bring it to the district court judge and proceed with the judicial confirmation, asking for a determination that these projects are ordinary and necessary. So the process, we're partway through, as Gary described, requires the city to call public hearing, which the city council did with Resolution 2013-15, and to publish notices of such hearing, which happened on December 21st. So the public hearing is the time for the council to hear testimony of any interested members of the public regarding the decision. And then, following that, 15 days later, or 14 days later, the council can meet and make a determination of whether or not to file that petition. Once the petition's filed, a court hearing will be held before a judge, and any interested persons can also show up and make comment or participate in the litigation at that point. And then the judge ultimately will issue a decision. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain questions, or if there are none, we could certainly open the public hearing.
I'm fine with it. Okay, thank you very much, Danielle. I will open the public hearing for public comment. I don't see anybody rushing to the podium. You don't want to be first, but he'll be last.
David Pierce, 716 East F Street. I support asking for judicial confirmation for funding of the water project only after having considered many reservations. There was any is and other means for obtaining the funding for the projects. They would have been, there would have been a ballot for the citizens of, or there could have been a ballot of citizens of Moscow to fund this project. It is clear that the project being proposed is needed. What is not clear, unless you pay close attention to what the city council, with the assistance of this city administration, has done...
David, could you pull the microphone down a little bit? Thank you.
What is not clear, unless you have paid close attention to what the city council, with the assistance of the city administration, has done, is to have already provided for the recently, in the recently passed Water and Sewer Rate Structure Ordinance, for the funds necessary to pay for these bonds. The recent Water and Sewer Rate Study Commission recommended, and the city council has already approved, future water and sewer rates, which have been designed to cover the cost of this and other necessary improvements to Moscow's water and sewage systems. This rate study and the previous Solid Waste Rate Study Commission were proclaimed to have representatives of various interest groups in the city. There were representatives from the city government, the Chamber of Commerce, real estate builders, apartment renters, and among others. But there was one major omission. There was no representative of the ordinary citizen, including the significant group of those citizens, the senior citizens. At the very least, a representative from the Sustainable Environment Commission could have been included in those rate study commissions. As proposed by the Solid Waste Study Commission, there was no provision for an on-demand option in the proposal sent to city council. It was only when local citizens brought the admission that such an option was eventually included. My point is that the inclusion of someone who represent the local citizenry on these commissions can be a benefit to the work of the commission. I am confident the city council will approve asking for judicial confirmation to seek binding authority for funding these necessary projects. I simply wanted to request that, in the future, the city administration consider having audit study commissions a representative of the local citizenry, in addition to representatives of those who clearly have a vested interest in the project. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Additional public comment? Going once, going twice, public comment is closed. Gary?
Thank you, Your Honor. And again, the process tonight is to take that public comment under advisement. Staff will work with the attorney to put together final touches on the petition, and will be coming to you in two weeks with council action.
Thank you. Now, before we go on to the next agenda item, I wanted to make an announcement that we will not have an executive session tonight, for those of you that have the schedule in front of you. So the next thing we're going to, with that being said, the next thing, we'll move on to a change in the meeting schedule due to Idaho Human Rights Day. Gary Redner will present.
Thank you, Your Honor. As a matter of course, when a public holiday falls upon, I forgot my glasses, so I can't read this. I'll just have to wait. When a public holiday falls upon a council meeting Monday, city ordinance requires or directs that city council meeting will occur the following day. So this, of course, is because of Idaho Human Rights Day, which is set for Monday, January 20. The regular council meeting will occur the next day, Tuesday, the 21st of January, at 7:00 PM.
Does this require any action on our part?
No, sir.
Just show up at the right day and time.
Okay, everybody, the next, the next council meeting will be January 21st at 7:00 PM then. I think with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. We've got some folks out here that have been waiting to see us and meet afterwards, would...
I would make a motion to adjourn.
I don't think, I'll second whoever made that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, folks, for coming. Have a nice evening. Be safe.